Heavenly Father, Lord, once again, we thank you tonight. We give you honor and praise for everything good in our lives. We thank you, Lord, for our salvation that makes us recognize who you are and what you do. Please forgive us when we sin, when we fail you. cleanse us tonight, Father, make us worthy, God, to even call down this prayer. We pray, Father, for all the families that death has invaded their homes and our communities tonight. We pray, God, a counsel and spirit, Lord, to the Baggett family, to the Cox family tonight, for the Spitzer family, for the Phillips family, Lord, for all others, God, that you call them home soon. We pray, Father, that you would be with each commissioner tonight as we do the work of your people. We pray you give us wisdom, discernment, and do things ever pleasing to you. All this we ask in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the appearance of citizens. If there's anyone here in the audience or dialed in that would like to address commission about anything not on the agenda, just state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Is there anyone dialed in online that would like to be?
Mr. Chairman, it's Commissioner Meredith.
Yes.
I would like to welcome some leadership Anderson County participants that's in our group this year. They are virtually online. As a part of their extracurricular activity, they have to attend a commission meeting. So there's probably five or six of them online, and I'd just like to welcome them.
Okay. Would you all like to? Commissioner Meredith, would you like to introduce them, have them say anything, or?
The first ones are Robbie Tejernet, I see him on there. Dawn Skeens. Sarah Burke. Jonathan Die. Jennifer Coleman. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds great. Well, thank you all for being here. Is there anyone here live in the audience that would like to address commission? Go ahead. Just make sure the microphone's on, just give us your name and address. Sure, whatever you're comfortable with.
My name is Tracy Faust. I live at 2602 Cross Creek Drive, and that is in Maryville, Maryville, Tennessee, 37803. All right, so this is my first time coming tonight. My husband, Jason Faust, he grew up in Anderson County, and his family, his dad is Jerry Faust, and so he's Anderson County homegrown. I live in Maryville, we all live in Maryville now, except for his dad. So I am coming tonight to ask questions about a business that we'd like to expand into Anderson County. So my dad is Johnny Parker. My dad and I started a fireworks company when I was a kid. He started it. It's Parker Family Fireworks. We have a little brick and mortar store over in Union County, right on the Knox County, Union County line. Three years ago, Blank County decided to change their ordinance and allow fireworks to be sold, and then the next year, the city of Maryville and the city of Alcoa joined in. And so we also have locations in Kentucky. We just have temporary locations. We put up a tent for two weeks from approximately June the 20th to July the 5th. So we're kind of in between now. We've got three locations in Maryville, and then we've got our little Union County store, and we've got some locations in Kentucky. And so we're going back and forth on 75, taking care of those locations, me and my dad and our kids. So we're just, we're pretty small. We're just a family on business, but we would like to ask, I don't know what the history is in Anderson County and with fireworks, I know that you guys don't allow fireworks right now, but I was hoping that someone would consider allowing fireworks to be sold during the season only. So that's what I was here to ask about, and I didn't know what the process was to see if it had been considered or to ask someone if they would consider it.
And you're retail only, not a?
Yes, yes, retail only.
We are at, the Legislative Committee for Anderson County has actually been, we've taken up the issue of our 1947 Fireworks Private Act, and we haven't, we haven't changed anything yet, but we are, we're looking at talking about that. Does anyone have any, any questions for Ms. Faust? Any commissioners? Probably the, I would probably refer you to the, I can get your, I've got your information here, I can get your phone number and email address and kind of give you updates for Legislative Committee if you wanted to kind of be present at that. Right now, we haven't changed, haven't changed any laws to make it legal, but if you want to be following along with that, I think we'll probably have some action in the next couple of months on that. And then at that point, we could probably refer you to the, the right for the Planning Commission or something, as far as to get approval, or if you're buying property or something to get rezoned.
Sure.
Does anyone have any comments or questions from Ms. Faust?
Commissioner Mead here.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm the Chair of Legislative Committee, and we just had a meeting this last week, actually, we discussed this. And like you said, currently, and since 1947, possession or selling fireworks in Anderson County has been illegal. Even though it allowed some fireworks displays, it still then required that any fireworks be purchased from outside the county, from another county where the purchase, where the sale would be legal. We're going to be talking about that a little bit later tonight, but we did, we've come into some things that we're, we've looked at that I'll be reporting about later. But right now, what we're kind of looking at is perhaps, we're going to make it legal to sell fireworks, but it may make it very, very restricted, only to the holiday seasons that are published by the state, which are very short, one near, one near the Fourth of July and one around Christmas, New Year's time. But there's, there's some talk that it may be restricted to specific nonprofit groups like the volunteer fire departments in the county, and so that has not been resolved yet. Another county, Washington County, has been, has been doing that since 2005. They have seven volunteer fire departments in their county, and they've had the ability that they are the exclusive ones to sell fireworks in their county, but it hasn't been particularly profitable. Their best year was like $20,000 profit, and only two or three of the fire departments had even taken part, and it was one of those fire departments that has a real good location that had been using part of their fire hall garage, and they were shut down by the state for not having the proper kind of sprinklers there. And so they didn't sell any last year, but they're trying to get going again for this, this coming season. But anyhow, that's going to be talked about a little bit later, and I mean, you can get my phone number and email off the website, or my, I'm not afraid to give out my email, it's on the website anyhow, it's just meadesteven, one word, at ATT.net, and I'll be glad to talk to you about this, but it's unlikely we'll be having retail, just regular retail sales, but it's not out of the question. Hope that helps you.
It does, and if you guys ever had any other questions, I've been doing it for, this will be my 17th year, and so every state is different. We've sold in Louisiana, Tennessee, and Kentucky. Every city and county is different. Like, for instance, the city of Maryville and city of Alcoa, they're pretty restrictive because their houses are pretty close together. So what they do is they adopt the state guidelines, because the state Fire Marshal's office really sets all the guidelines for these temporary locations, and, and you have to have a permit from the state, and then the city can add to that and say, well, you know, we want to charge $1,000 for a permit, so at least we're getting something out of this, and we only want you to sell, you know, for these two weeks only. And the city of Maryville, for instance, they have an ordinance where you can only sell on certain highways, so you have to be on 411, 321, or East Broadway, because they didn't want just random little fireworks, you know, companies throwing up tents, you know, on all the side streets and back roads, and, you know, they wanted to at least have it on main roads where they could kind of keep an eye on it and where it didn't.
Hold the border, Mr. Chairman.
There's all kinds of things to, you know, there's, there's ways to make it legitimately safe.
Do you have a card or anything you could leave with us?
I didn't bring, I left my purse in the truck.
If you just want, if you just want to write it down on something, and we'll, we'll be in, we can let you know when we're having more meetings later on related to it, but thank you for coming.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Do you want me to, is it okay to come up there and?
Yeah, if you just want to leave us your contact information. Is there anyone else, like, commission? Any other questions? And we'll move on to approval and correction of the agenda, start with the consent agenda. Commissioner Waddell.
I wait for the consent agenda.
That's just, just accept, just accepting the inventory of the, inventory report of the Highway Department?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Fritz?
Mr. Chairman, I asked that everyone speak into their microphones, I'm not hearing a word anyone's saying.
Okay. Commissioner Mead?
Yes, I'd like to, to add to the regular agenda, the Legislative Committee meeting to Part 10 Committee Board Reports at the end of that section. I'd also like to move from the consent, from the consent agenda, number four Waste Management Funds, to Part 11 of the regular agenda, new business.
Okay. And we may need to come back around on that other one for, under the regular agenda, but yeah, we'll move the, the other, to the Waste Management. Okay, and Commissioner, let's see, Commissioner Yeager is making the motion to approve as amended?
Commissioner Mead, can you, can you tell me again what the other one, other than the Waste Management situation is, what you're adding? Yeah, the, the Minutes and Report on the Legislative Committee meeting, it was held just a few days ago. Okay, sure, that's fine for my second, for my motion.
Okay. And seconded by Commissioner McCamey, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Just consent, yeah. Yeah. Let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, I think Robbie was wanting to get your attention.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Robbie.
If it's possible, I'd like to move the Audit Committee Report to the regular agenda also, underneath my Finance Report.
Okay.
I'm finding that.
Is that, okay, I didn't know, we need to just take that up under the regular agenda correction?
Yes, please.
Okay. Commissioner Mead, is your vote going through still?
There we go. I'm sorry, I touched it but didn't take it.
Motion passes unanimously. Now, for the regular agenda, approval of the regular agenda. Robbie, you wanted the Audit Report moved?
If I could just do it right under my Budget Report, it won't take.
Just under the Budget Report, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I would like, under Committee Reports, I'll give a, be glad to give a brief report on the IDB meeting that I attended last week regarding the tax abatement for 3M.
Okay, do you want to put that, do you think we should put that under new business? Maybe, or?
Well, it's old business, you can put it wherever your little heart desires, sir.
Okay, let's do that under maybe old business, and then?
That'll be fine.
We've got Legislative Committee requested by Commissioner Mead, or Committee and Board Reports. Commissioner Creasy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, some of you may recall that it's been in the news lately that the city of Oak Ridge is opposing a proposal to move the uranium operations in Oak Ridge to a facility in Erwin, Tennessee. I'd like to add to our agenda, under new business, a discussion of this proposal and/or our possible opposition to join Oak Ridge, and I so move, under new business.
Okay. Okay, and we got a motion by Commissioner Yeager to approve as amended?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Commissioner Waddell?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Do we, okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mayor Frank, did, did you feel, did you have, did you have any information or anything that you wanted to, any lawsuit update or anything you wanted to go over possibly in executive session?
I did not, I just had reached out to you and Jay, and I think Jay sent an email that if you all wanted an executive session to bring us up to speed on where we are, I think there was a hearing that took place on the 12th, and so I just didn't know if you all wanted to do that or not. I just threw it out there, and so did Jay.
Okay, did everybody get that email?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, any, any interest in adding an executive session? Okay, if not, let's go to the Board and vote then, as, on the, approving the regular Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, Committee Reports, I've got the Purchasing Report by Catherine Ashmary.
Everybody, under contracts approved by the Law Director, we have two for canon copiers for juvenile courts submitting for your approval, either individually or as a group.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager.
As a group.
As a group, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion?
Yes, as a group.
Pay attention, Mead.
Go to the Board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Next, contracts pending Law Director approval, there are four that have now all been approved by the Law Director, submitting for your approval either individually or as a group.
Motion by Commissioner Scott.
Yes, sir, as a group, please.
Seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Motion passes unanimously.
And that's everything on my committee report.
Any questions for Catherine? Thank you. Have a good evening. Next up is the Budget Report. Robbie Holbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, I'll discuss the Passion Fund Balance Report. Restricted funds are $991,991. Committed funds, $2,065,498. Assigned funds are $2,019,148, and unassigned fund balance is $6,013,093. Total fund balance, $11,089,830. Enter cash for January, I think in January is $12,482,770, which is up 1.3 million from last year at this time. Any questions about the fund balance report? Okay, sales tax for December, we talked about this, January still hasn't come in. We talked about this last month. For the first time, we went down 19%, but there's a hole in the county. But for Anderson County's portion, we were down from 18%, but it was still the fourth highest month we've had in the year 2020, so we finished the year at 5.3 million, and we were at 56% from 2019 for the whole year.
So we've been down two months, two months in a row?
No, just one.
Just the one, okay.
Yes, yes, sir, we still haven't gotten, we haven't, we, the mayor received an email today stating that sales tax for Anderson County was like the fourth highest in the state for, I haven't, but we haven't got it in the Finance Department yet, so I didn't report on it. We haven't received the money yet to receive, which usually will be tomorrow or the next day, Monday this week, probably Wednesday, well, tomorrow is Wednesday, but, and so I'll have that for you next month.
Okay.
But I feel like it's going to be really good for January. Okay. If there's no questions, I'll move into the appropriations for the budget amendments. Group two appropriations, there were two for the School Department, number eight and 26, seeking approval as a group or individually.
Motion by Commissioner Denenberg.
As a group, please, as a group, please.
Seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, there were no transfers in Group Three, so moving on to Group Four appropriations. I'd like to pull number six, page six, number 12, out to vote on individually, because we have a change on that one, but nine through 24, with 12 out, seeking approval as a group. Or we can take any individually, or I can answer any questions you have.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz.
Move as a group?
Group, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and Group Four, number 12, was from the Sheriff's Department. It's increasing revenue insurance recovery, $5,570, and it's increasing motor vehicle, Code 718, $3,025, and Code 338, vehicle maintenance, $25,45. Tyler Pitt, 335, originally, but he discovered his mistake after the budget meeting, so I told him I would just ask the commission to vote on it separately to correct it.
Motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Fritz, to approve. Any discussion? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and Group Five transfers, there's one from the Highway Department for $10,000, increasing, I gotta find it real quick, overtime pay, $10,000, and decreasing night watchman salaries by $10,000.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, approved, seconded by Commissioner Fritz. Any discussion? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and in Group Six, there's also one appropriation that affects unassigned fund balance. It's from the Law Director's Office, increasing legal services, $19,986.13, and decreasing unassigned fund balance by $19,986.13. This is additional attorney fees versus, the Smith versus Anderson County case.
Commissioner Scott, you have a question?
Yes, Jay, are you there?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
You know, I've got a, I, I'd like for you to, if you would, to speak with those attorneys and perhaps get them to adjust some of their charges. I mean, just right off the hip, there's, there's a charge in there for $225 for them to give us an update through County Commission. I think that's, I think it's more like part of their job to give us an update on what's going on, or to see if there's any questions that we have regarding anything that they handled for us, but I was kind of perusing the bill, and I just, there were just several things that caught my attention that I thought, you know, really, I mean, we've had these issues with them not handling the case as we expected, and I just think we're being overcharged.
Okay, I'll be glad to take it up. Can you call me tomorrow and give me specific entries? I will tell you, they've reduced their fee, we pay a very discounted fee there, but I still want to take up any issue anybody's got, just send me an email, or call me, or text me, and let me know which issue you want me to take to them, and any entry there, and we'll see what we can do. I'll bring it up to them. Thank you so much.
I mean, in the meantime, can we hold off on paying this, or what?
We owe them the money. They're going to work for us. I know it's very frustrating, but lawyer work is not results-driven. It seems that way to the client at times, but when we tell them we're going to pay and we hire these people, then I think it's good for us to pay our bills, but I'll be glad to take any adjustments, or take them to them, see if we can't get a credit, I don't have a bit of problem doing that.
Okay, well, in the meantime, I'm going to vote no, just based on my belief that there should be adjustments.
I understand, but we're going to have to pay the bill.
Sure.
No doubt about it.
And I understand your point, and I'm just letting you know why I'm voting no.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Waddell?
We, we talked about this extensively in budget, and I voted no, I'll be voting no again tonight. Just as a brief recap, they didn't perform to the standards I think they should have performed. We're paying for art not, we got someone else that showed up that didn't have the knowledge that he did of the case. I think that's one of the problems why we, why we're in the situation we're in. I do think they are to be adjusted. The reason they were here in the commission meeting in the first place is because of their failures in the courtroom. They, they were here because they failed us, so for us to have to pay for them to come and explain the job they did is, is, doesn't make much sense to me, but I'll be voting no also. Thank you.
We had a motion by Commissioner Mead to approve, and that was seconded by Commissioner Denberg, and Commissioner Denberg has a question. Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, I don't have a question, but if those who are interested want to take a look at the charges that we were given, for them to research for them to research and ready themselves to come to that meeting, I think you'll find that the charges are a lot more than any $250. Because if I, my memory serves me correctly, the number that I came up with, with just those entries as readying for the commission meeting, special edition meeting, was just under or somewhere around $19,000.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. Yes is to pay. No is not. 12 yes or no. Motion passes. Robbie, I think you might be on mute.
I am, I apologize. This should have been, I put it under group A, but it should be group seven. Section A budget guidelines, calendar and forms. Just for information, I want to, to read the budget, the motions and what was passed. Motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Jameson to accept the budget guidelines as presented with the addition of requiring department heads to submit two proposed budgets. One budget should have no pay increases and the second budget should include pay increases of 1,000 for full-time employees and 250 for part-time employees. Motion passed unanimously via roll call vote. The second motion was by Commissioner Denver Waddell, seconded by Commissioner Catherine Denenberg to approve the budget calendar as presented. Motion passed unanimously via roll call vote. And the third motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Fritz to approve the budget, budget forms as presented. Motion passed unanimously via roll call vote. I don't need, I don't need commission to act on this, but I just wanted to let you all know what happened. Also, section B, there was new business. Commissioner Isabel requested the Budget Committee's support for, for the drafting of a resolution by Law Director Jay Jaeger for presentation to County Commission. The resolution requests that U.S. Congressman Chuck Fleschman request COVID-19 funding support for rural volunteer fire departments. Motion by Commissioner Waddell, seconded by Commissioner Jameson to support Commissioner Isabel's request. The motion passed unanimously via recall, via roll call vote.
Yes, the motion to approve the already written request to our legislative, to our state and federal legislators to consider that funding.
Motion, do we have a second? Are you trying to second or just, or, oh, we got a second by Commissioner Tammy? And did you want to pick on that? Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Mead.
All this is, is a request. And so it doesn't, it doesn't tie us down to any, any expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. That's all I have for the Budget Committee, but I do have an audit committee report I'd like to present really quickly. We met on February, the Audit Committee met February 9th virtually to, and in person to discuss the audit findings for 1920 fiscal year. There were three of them. One of them from the School Department, which is currently under investigation and can't be discussed. The second one was the OCJP grant, the ASAP grant that the county requested to terminate. And we were, we have terminated that grant. And the third one was with Clerk of Master's Office, and we are currently working on that. We're just not closed yet. But motion was made by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Denver to accept the audit reports and the corrective action plans for 2020 fiscal year audit findings, 2020, oh, 002 and 2020, 003. Motion passed unanimously via recall vote. And I just need the commission to approve this action also.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Mr. Wondell, did you have a question? Are we trying to make the motion?
Uh, not on this subject. I'll wait till this motion's over, Mr. Chairman. Thanks.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, that's all I have for my reports. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Robbie Good report. I was able to get the report in the packet, but I, I wasn't able to obtain the budget report supporting documents. And I went online to try to click the link and it wasn't clicking. So were those sent out in the email probably and I missed it or?
They were sent out with the, with the County Commission agenda. They're always included in that.
They were in the consent agenda.
The audit report, the audit report was in the consent.
Yeah.
The budget report's what you're asking me about, right?
Oh.
Yeah, I'm talking about, yeah, the sales report. I, I saw the, you know, the report where we make the request for amendments or what have you in group three or four. I didn't see the group page, but I saw the request. But I, I missed everything else, so I was just trying to.
I can send that to you tomorrow in an email if you'd like.
What, what, who's, I guess, Mr. Chairman, what I want to find out is who's responsible for making sure the link works on the website where we can just go to it and citizens can go to it and click on it and follow along?
Thank you for asking.
Uh huh. That's the issue, okay. Brian's kind of explained there. I, I did hear him saying there was an issue with the, the web, the new website's not .gov yet, it's .com, so that's. Yes, we're, we're currently transitioning into Anderson TN or AndersonCountyTN.gov. We're working with that process. Anderson-County.com should be up. And then the Anderson County Commission should be up as well. But they are transitioning. Our web developer is working that as we speak. If you all notice anything that isn't working, please let me know and I'll get it addressed with our vendor.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Chairman, just, just if I could, I'm on, just to let Brian know, I'm on the Anderson County dash government.
Anderson-County?
Yeah, sorry, AndersonCounty-County.com. And it's not active. It shows the budget report, but you can't click the hyperlink is all I'm trying to say.
I believe that's being remedied as we speak. Annette Ran downstairs. She'll have that up there in just a moment.
No problem. But I, I don't want anyone to think there's anything wrong here other than I just want the people to be able to see the report when Robbie brings it up and he does a good job and he covered all the items in his presentation. It wasn't like anything was missed. But thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would like to take an opportunity to invite, remind all of our fellow commissioners, especially those on the Operations Committee as well as our department heads, that budget season is starting. And we would love to have everyone's input on the budget long before the Budget Committee votes on it and brings it to full commission. So if you have opportunities to come by, we'd love to have you with us during our meetings. If you're not able to come by, virtually attend, telephone, whatever you'd like to do. We would love to solicit every commissioner's input since we all represent the entire county to have input in on, on this year's budget. So I just wanted to make that announcement and invite everyone to help us form this year's budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for Robbie?
Chairman Anderson, I would also like to say that the budget, the guidelines and the calendar and all, all the budget discussion is in the packet of Commissioner Wondell. That should, should be online, but we are, the next budget discussion will be at the, the next biz, the regularly scheduled budget committee meeting in March. And there is one additional meeting in March on the, on the 18th for budget hearing. So, but all that is in the packet. Once it's uploaded, you'll be able to see that.
Thank you, Robbie. Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, my, my comment actually is on the, just the prior thing about the, about the census and the redistricting. Do we know when we're going to receive the, I think they're called census maps that we get from the state? They show all the little, you know, it's where, it has little areas that have so many people in them and you can't, you can't break those boundaries. And so we can't really do much until we have that. Do we know when they're, because I was here for the last time we did this. Do we know when that's, when those are going to be available?
Commissioner Mead, I, I don't, I can't recall. I received an email recently and reported on it at operations. I think the state was going to get their download on April 30th. I participated back in the end of October with, on a webinar with state and federal officials that were briefing us on it. Apparently in May, you will be receiving your packet. This is what they had outlined at the end of October, your packet that has all of that in it. And then you'll do a kickoff event as the local redistricting body.
Okay, that's great. They really helped me understand. I think those are called GIS maps or something like that. There's a.
You have to have by December 31st, your plan must be done because then it goes to the legislature.
Right.
And then you have different redistricting options as, as far as, you know, who you work with. You can work with our own JIS department here, which is Mr. Brown. You can work with C Task. They provide free training by the comptroller. And then also the Development District said that they would be happy to engage with us as well to assist. So you have several options there to assist you.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Frank. Commissioner Mead, Commissioner Fritz.
For the next several months, especially with the budgeting and the redistricting and all that stuff like that, I'd just like to ask, you know, that all the various chairmans work closely with Annette. Just, you know, for Robbie to have the budget there, put together the schedule for the budgets, things of that nature, to make sure that we get the, all these different meetings put on the commission calendar. Because that way, make it a lot easier for all 16 commissioners to be able to look at that calendar constantly and be able to know when all the various things are going on and, and help, try to keep us up to date on when all the various different meetings are going on. Because we've got so much happening that, you know, it'll keep us to keep things in line. And that would, at least I know it'll help me because of my old age and me getting senile. It'll just help keep me going in order here. So I greatly appreciate that they could do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you, Robbie. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next up is Director of Schools, Dr. Parrott. Oh, that, we're going to do that under old business. Dr. Parrott signed in. Maybe we can come back, come back around to. He's got the written report submitted. We'll, we'll come back to him. Mayor Frank, are you ready to go?
Yes, sir. And Dr. Parrott might be. They might be doing their retreat. It seems like I saw an email, but I could be wrong on that. I can look that up after I finish my report. The only action item I have under the mayor's report is a resolution authorizing the county mayor to apply for a voca access to services grant through the Tennessee Office of Criminal Justice Programs. This was a grant opportunity that the Office of Criminal Justice, they reached out to Attorney General Clark and also myself. And the, the funds, this kind of came at an opportune time because they're doing the Family Justice Center. If we did apply for the grants for, say, part of the single entrance project, the grant dollars have to be allocated based on a cost share formula. And so these dollars have to go for victims. So that would create kind of some math issues there and, and some challenges. So Commissioner Creasy and Louise McCowen and ADA Director Roger Lloyd met Melissa Miller at the, the new site of the Family Justice Center, and they have come up with some items. Normally, we will put a certain amount in the grant, but, but because this opened up so quickly and is due on the 22nd, the language in this resolution here commits Anderson County to a 20% match. That is the program. It is an 80, 20% match. And General Clark estimated around $5,000. So if that can give you some kind of understanding that we're not talking about, you know, a million dollars and then Anderson County would, would have to come up with 20%, but that's a little, you know, gauge there for you. So I am asking for approval of this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Jameson to approve. Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, I just have to point out the obvious. If we get the grant, we pay 20%. If we don't get the grant, we pay 100%. I think we should ask for it.
Any other discussion? Go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the other item that I put on the agenda was some good news that you all will appreciate as county commissioners. The governor has included in his budget again this year a direct grant allocation like last year. So the county will receive, the plan is for the county to receive $1,091,777. Those funds will be available after August 1st. And like last year, last year, they kind of opened it up a little bit because of COVID. This year, they're going to go back to their original intent, which is these, this money was to be spent for capital maintenance, road projects, public safety, utility system upgrades, IT hardware. So that will all be, they'll send us an application sometime in July and then we will get that going. And just for those of you that represent municipalities, the city of Clinton will be receiving $250,458. Norris will be receiving $65,054. The city of Oak Ridge will be receiving $667,981. Oliver Springs, $104,704. And Rocky Top will be receiving $68,818. And those are based on census allocations. So I thought you would appreciate some good news. And then just real quickly, I will know Robbie mentioned you asked him about the sales tax. And just so you know, we do communicate, but the reason he doesn't report this is I, I get a report from the County Mayor's Association because the Mayor's Association was a lead on the internet sales tax change. And so our association tracks the revenues coming directly out of Nashville. And Robbie doesn't report them at the same time until it gets into our bank account because many times it's off just a little bit because these are just direct revenues and they have to be split. revenues and they have to be split. But to his point, we did increase 224%. We were the fourth largest in the state for January. So that would be the December collections. And so, our numbers show 652,000. And if you go back to when that internet sales tax went into effect, for comparison, in January of 2019, we received 201,000, $201,457. So you can see that's a considerable increase. And that's all I have.
Thank you for that update. Any questions for the mayor? I do have a couple of things, Mayor Frank. I wanted to pass some, some people that emailed that live in the vicinity of the Glen Alpine Convenience Center. And I was just wondering, do you have any updates that we can pass along to them as far as the, the, the electronic sign there at the convenience center, littering signs, that sort of thing?
I do not. I can check in with Jeff on that. I do know that I did brief Operations Committee on the amount of litter. He probably noticed in Anderson County and also in Knox County and other counties where you travel. That is, you know, the direct impact of a lack of our litter grant program operating at full speed with inmates. And that has been limited because of COVID, and that's what you're seeing in other communities as well. But we do have a small contracted amount that we usually kind of use to supplement through the year. And I did let the Operations Committee know that we would be triggering, which we already have. We have just asked for that contract to just go ahead and expedite the contract so that we can get some of this picked up. And then if we need to come back and make a request for, you know, another pot of funding, because the, the trash is really building up. On the safety issues, TDOT is doing, they did write to me, I guess this has been a couple or a few months ago, and they are doing a safety review of that whole corridor there that deals with not only the convenience center, but the new subdivision that continues to grow there, and then also the industrial park. And so, they're going to see if there's some improvement that can be made there. And then I guess as far as that corridor is concerned, Norris and Mike Carberry led an effort to get the Norris Highway designated as a scenic highway. And today, it was announced that that was approved. So I know that was a lot of work from folks like you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Carberry. So that is an advancement for that area.
Thank you. Yeah. Any other questions for the mayor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have one.
Go ahead.
Mayor Frank?
Yes.
Do you have a little report or an update on the moving around of items on the third floor, so we can move forward with the interview rooms and perhaps an update on the 118A and the opening of the new entry for the courthouse?
Yes. So, so just a few updates. Yesterday, while the courthouse was closed, the Knoxville Teachers Credit Union took the opportunity to move their offices out of the courthouse. And we really appreciate the longstanding partnership with them. They have a location right across the street at 125 Lockliner Street. Yesterday, they officially vacated those offices. And today, Roger's team was in there, you know, patching any holes and repainting and getting them. There's two offices there that are ready for occupancy. Also, just to report, the election administrator, Mark Stevens, he consolidated his equipment and voting machines and other supplies and materials stored throughout the courthouse. And those were all, that moving started on January 19th. By the end of that week, they had everything moved there. Roger did a great job, as well as his, as the election machine technicians, they were all there. And they had very few needs as far as needs for down there at the DARC, but we did assist in getting them some additional shelving. So that is all done and that space, all those spaces are vacated now. IT completed their move to across the hallway. I think Roger's team did some painting. I don't know that they're fully 100% stood up, but they are officially moved across the hall. And that's all been accomplished. Yes, ma'am?
Excuse me. Is that going to be a permanent location for them, or is that just a temporary until other space comes available?
Well, it gives them, unless they continue to grow, it gives them an additional office from where they were. So they each have their own workspace now, where prior, they had to share space.
All right. Well, thank you.
Bids for the single entrance, what happened is there were some issues with contractors getting subcontractor proposals. And they reached out to Catherine Oshmary and Purchasing and requested an extension. She did grant an extension. So tho, those bids will be opened tomorrow. So we'll see what we get there, and hopefully, we're able to award a contract and begin work. With that, you approved tonight as part of the Budget Committee, two expenditures. One of those is for moving the archives. Mr. Cole is allowing space within his area to be part of the archives. So what we're going to do is need to do some work there. There's not heavy construction, but there will be, if you've toured in there, there's a lot of paneling walls and, and things like that. We'll be reconfiguring that space. So you did approve that tonight. And then also, in a separate amendment, you approved just a small level of engineering and design for that area when we, on the third floor, for the witness rooms. So we're just, I have already reached out to the judges. The judges, Judge Elig is going to host the meeting for the judges and the clerks. We're going to meet with the architect, make sure there isn't any other programming needs that they have while we're there doing that construction, if they do have other needs, since more space is now going to be opened up than when we first put together that witness room plan. And then also, I'm working with Royden and Catherine and Purchasing on surplusing that vault door. Jeff Cole and I met with Annette on some of the materials and that would need to be surplused in that back room. So it's all like one piece at a time, one step at a time. It's all, we're all getting there.
It's just putting the pieces to the puzzle where they need to go.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions for the mayor? Comment. Thank you very much, Mayor Frank. Next up, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time to be with you. I just have, unless somebody's got any questions on my written report, I just have one action item tonight. It's item C. Catherine Denenberg has requested that I come to you. She's got a wonderful idea to celebrate Black History Month in Anderson County. It's going to take some time, but I'm certainly willing to help her with this. We've got a slave that's buried down behind Bull Run off Blacks Ferry. His name's Hade Black. And he's buried in somewhat of a pauper's grave. There's 250 graves on a 1.3 acre parcel of property. We'd like to bring his wife home to be with Hade. She's buried in a pauper's grave in Knox County. This is going to take some work, especially if we can't find family members to consent to this. There'll have to be a couple of judicial orders put in place to do this, but I'm certainly willing to do this. We'll have to exhume her body and then reenter her body here beside Hade. And that's in here in Anderson County. The Legal Services Committee has passed a motion that if I do any special projects for county commissioners or officials, it's basically unlegal related or nonlegal related, then I need commission to approve that. This does have a lot of legal components to it, especially the judicial orders. But I'm coming to you, ask permission to take on this project and help Commissioner Denenberg bring Hade's wife home. But any questions on this issue?
Well, I just want to make a correction. It's not a pauper's grave site. It is the Black family, and it's the name of the family that owned Hade. It's actually the, the family cemetery or the family graveyard, and that was actually moved to accommodate the building of the steam plant for TBA. And I made the commissioners from that district, our fine commissioner, Wondell and Fritz, letting them know what's going on, since this is their district. I just kind of got into this because of the issues with TBA, and this is in the area of the TBA property. So I just wanted to make the correction that it is not a pauper's grave that Hade is buried in, but his wife, yes, when she passed years after him, there were no family members that we know of to claim her remains and being indigent, she was buried in Knox County in a, in the pauper's cemetery.
Thank you.
Yes.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any other questions or discussion? Hey, let's vote. Commissioner Creasy, is your vote still transferring?
Yes, I'm pressing the button yes, but nothing happens.
We'll, we'll just put him as yes verbally. Okay.
Oh, there it went.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do appreciate you. That's all I have. Unless anybody's got any questions on any legal updates or legal questions that I can assist you with tonight, I'll be glad to do that.
Questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, I got it. I'm just a second late. Yeah, in, in regards to the, the lawsuit update, part B, diverted in our favor of Anderson County. Is that, is that, is that kind of that part of it over now, or is this something that will be appealed again?
They have the ability to appeal that decision. I feel much better about this case from 2013 to 2020, those tax years. But they do have the ability to appeal that case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Next up, committee and board reports. We've got Operation Committee report. Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, we have Resolution Number 21-02-848. Seeking assistance, Commissioner McCamey made a motion to approve that resolution, seeking assistance from the state of Tennessee for the purposes of renovations to adequately operate the Anderson County Office on Aging and Senior Center. Commissioner Mead seconded the motion. Motion passed forward full commission for approval.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Commissioner Creasy, you want to vote verbally again?
All right. Yeah, I'm still pushing the button. Nothing's happening. It just says voting.
How do you vote here? Yeah, how, how are you vote? Are you voting yes?
Yes. Yeah, I'm pressing the yes button.
Motion passes unanimously.
The next one, Mr. Chairman, is the draft Resolution Number 21-02-850, asking our state and federal official to provide Anderson County's rural volunteer fire department issues quota financial assistance to relieve the training of COVID caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. And this is, goes along with what was already passed during the budget cycle. I would like to also add to that, if that resolution's approved and it's sent, is the Courier News did an excellent article that's got the picture of the Andersonville Volunteer Fire Department on it. We did a lot of discussion, research on that. If we could send that as well.
In a second. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay. Commissioner Creasy, do you want to give us your vote verbally while you're restarting?
Yeah, vote yes.
Commissioner Creasy votes yes. Commissioner, Commissioner Meredith, you, you still out there? Oh, okay, yours is locked in. Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, committee members. Commissioner McCamey made a motion recommending county commission that Operations Committee be the redistricting committee for 2020 census. Commissioner Mead seconded the motion. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion? And let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes Operations Committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up is the Legislative Committee. Chairman Mead.
Okay, here. Why have I lost my way here? Okay, say again where we're at.
It's just the Legislative Committee update.
Okay, here we go. Yeah, the, the Legislative Committee met on, on 11 February, so just a few days ago. We, we talked about really two different things. One is the, the primary thing we talked about, there was the fireworks private act, that we were hoping to be able to be resolved. But we come into a bunch of different things. And what I'm going to be able to tell you, some of the things that we learned. Washington County, I talked with the head of their volunteer fire department system. They have seven volunteer fire departments. And in, in 2005, they got a private act passed that allowed the fire departments up there to exclusively sell fireworks in the county during the holiday period specified in state law. That's a short period of time, near the Fourth of July, and then a little bit longer period of time at Christmas and New Year's. The same, the same dates that were in the, in the paper we had for, that the law directors started with early and showed us. But we didn't, we, but I talked, when I talked with the, with the head of the fire departments up there, what he told me is that it hasn't really gone that well. The volunteer fire departments have a hard time getting enough people to man these things for the, for all those long periods. And, you know, of their seven fire departments, only seven, I mean, only two or three of the fire departments have taken part in it at all. And only one is really embraced it broadly. The best year they've ever had was $20,000. I said a little bit something about this earlier. And last year, they made nothing at all, because a fireworks company that was trying to get a chance to move into the county came by and noted that there were some minor aspects of the state law that they were completely following. of the state law that they were completely following and the fire marshal shut down their entire program last year. They expect to get it back up. It was the kind of thing like a tent not being quite enough many feet away from a building or being in a in a in a garage that didn't have the proper kind of sprinkling system. But it caused some problems. But uh, we also have an attorney general opinion specifically on that that addresses exactly that the state doing that was absolutely legal, continues to be legal. And when it was challenged in court here recently, uh, it was defeated in their favor. And so it's something we could do, but I don't think we need to have real high hopes about how much money it will make. And it does take quite a bit of effort. In Washington County, not only to the P to the, does the volunteer fire department have to get the permit from the state, they also have a permit process that basically is individual permission of exactly where they're going to run these outlets with the fireworks and all provides a little bit of oversight from as well from the county and the sheriff's department to make sure it's being done in accordance with the with state law, in accordance with their with their policy. The Commissioner Anderson made a motion to request the law director to make modifications to the fireworks private act and to discuss and submit it for review. And that passed by roll call vote, but it's really not ready because we found a whole bunch of new information, including attorney general stuff, and we're also waiting for some information back uh, from John Reagan, who would of course would be sponsoring the private act uh, from the uh, from the legislative legal office to make sure that what we're thinking of doing would all be okay. So we're not ready to vote on that one yet. Commissioner Merriman also made a motion to approve resolution uh, twenty twenty one oh two eight fifty two requesting the General Assembly to remove their prohibition on bingo games, including the nonprofit gaming law. And uh, well, we can do that, but we already checked with the state and with the and discovered that Tennessee state law specifically prohibits bingo period. And uh, it would take a change in state law to try to do this. And there's some discussion that that would be unlikely, but you never know. But in any case, it's too late to submit it this year. And so uh, uh, whether or not the commission approves this or not is newt because it can't be done this year. There is a slight possibility it could be done by private act, but that's highly unlikely. There's also a slight possibility that if there is a bill that's already addressing that specific part of the law and John Reagan and his assistant is looking into that, there is a possibility of trying to get them to add something to the law. But again, that would still be a question, but that's as much as we can do at this point. That would be, we had no new business, no old business and we adjourn. Any other, any other questions or discussion?
Thank you, Chairman Mead for the report. And we'll move on to new business, Commissioner Creasy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, what I was saying earlier when I brought it putting it on this agenda under new business was that Oak Ridge has took a a position of being in opposition to the move that is being proposed to move the uranium operations to the facility in Irwin, Tennessee. I'd like for us to uh, maybe have some discussion in one of our committees, possibly the Operations Committee or the Intergovernmental Committee to discuss that and see where we want to stand on it. I I'm personally am all joining the Oak Ridge City Council myself uh, in my opposition to it. I've worked at Y twelve and I have had assignments at Irwin before and I think it would be best to keep that operation here in Oak Ridge. But whichever committee we would like to go to to discuss that and maybe have a public hearing or or something. Commissioner Denenberg's done an excellent job at the Intergovernmental Committee and if she's willing, I'd like to recommend that we uh, send it to her committee for discussion.
You you want to make that a motion, refer to Intergovernmental Committee?
If she's willing, yes.
Commissioner Creasy, you know I would have no objection to anything you wanted to bring to the Intergovernmental Committee.
Thank you very much. I'll make a motion, we send it to the Intergovernmental Committee for discussion and uh, and see where we stand on it and and then if we need to go to operations, we can do it there or legislative because I think this is is a big deal and we may want to even uh, have a resolution to our state legislators uh, and maybe even uh, go to ask the Knox County Commission, the Rome County Commission, Campbell County and their joining counties, their commission to join us. This is, this could be, could be detrimental to all these counties.
Got a, got a motion in a second and Commissioner Mead, you have?
Yeah, I I worked at Y twelve for a long time and I'm also seeing the pictures of how many of the buildings for this new facility out there are are very near to completion. I know timeframe for the very final stuff that they do takes quite a long time, but the whole structure is there. Plus having the the highly enriched uranium storage facility right there, I think is a critical part of the safeguards for the materials that are going to be going in and out of there. Additionally, the the organization that that is provides the security for those shipments all over the country is right here nearby. Are they talking about moving the whole operation to Irwin or they just talk about some specific part of that?
It's from what I understand, and I'm not up to date on it as probably the city council is, but uh, I think it's a purification of uranium that they're be doing there, which they also do at Oak Ridge.
Okay, so that 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 is, so that's actually just a part of what goes on here.
Yeah.
Because the 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 primary things they do over there have nothing to do with that particular process, they just use the uh, their product.
Yeah, I think it'd be, we could have good public discussion, invite someone from Y twelve to come and explain it to us and uh, maybe join other counties and ask them to do the same thing.
I would also say that, as Chris Mead, that we should probably talk with the Oak Ridge site specific advisory board, which provides oversight for all of the Oak Ridge, you know, regional, Oak Ridge DOE regional operations that would include that facility as well. Maybe we should ask them, they have pretty regular meetings, I used to be on that some years ago.
Excellent idea.
Any other discussion? Hey, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other new business? Old business, got COVID nineteen update first, Commissioner Scott.
Actually, I had the waste management.
Sorry, I was trying to, excuse me, Mr. Mead. I was trying to hit the buttons that I could speak. I wanted to ask Brian while he's there, um, what kind of issues he's having. He sent out a message stressing that email shouldn't be used for just conversation, you know, pick up the phone or text someone at this time if possible. Because apparently we're having some issues. I mean, I got an email from Commissioner Mead earlier this week and I was looking at who some of the recipients were and I didn't have a clue who they were, so I wasn't going to respond to it and thought maybe that was part of the issue. So if Brian's there, if he could kind of guide us as to where we stand with that, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay, our our email issue at this moment has been remediated. We don't have the actual problem that we had late last week. But what we are still seeing are lots of emails coming at us with with uh, like gift card requests and and some people are, you know, we're we're getting keen to the fact not to open them, but there's still some of them being opened. And that's continually a problem as we open those things, we're letting those hackers know that we're here and we're live and keep doing it. And that's where I think in operations, I believe we had a discussion uh, last week about moving forward with uh, doing some things to help us be able to communicate better. I know that was one of the things that we worked on in operations and I believe that was something we're going to present back to you all as a body next month, H R, Kim, Whitaker and I, we've been asked to look into some communication aspects, but your question on the emails, um, they're still coming at us. It it looks to be Chinese in nature, but it's it's manageable, but we all should as a group, all of us from the one end of the spectrum to the other, be very careful with our emails. It's 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 Achilles heel. If we we can have the best billion dollar system in the planet for security and and a click can end that. So the employee is the last and the best defense line there is and we can do everything and other than that, but we still have to get our staff trained up a little bit. I think that's where we were heading with some of that in operation.
I appreciate it, I really appreciate it, Brian. You know, it's it's been a headache unfortunately all over the place, whether it's somebody, you know, utilizing social media platforms to converse with their friends or send photographs out on, you know, through social media or even just through email. But it really, it did bother me that here I was getting an email and I didn't know who a handful of the recipients were and I just thought it was um, concerning.
The the practice they are doing in the in the hacking industry is called whaling and spear phishing is the terms that they're trying there. They get our names, they harvest it from our websites, they try to find out who we are, what our names, what our groups are doing with one another, what this individual may do with that individual and they do their homework. And with just a little bit of time, they try to put together and continue on. So our goal is just to keep on fighting it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Mead. You want to talk about the waste management?
Yeah, but the waste management funds, uh, I had a letter that I I submitted and it went in the the other agenda uh, from Oak Ridge High School. The problem they're having is because of COVID uh, safety concerns and requirements, the vocal groups there are basically not being able to do really any public performances. And what they've been requested to do, and it's hard for them to do because they don't quite have all the equipment, is to prepare videos of their performances and then provide them to various places around the county. That that would be for senior facilities and uh, uh, for various nonprofits and things all the way, all over the coun, all over the county primarily, some probably even outside the county. Also to provide this stuff generally just for for people in the vicinity that request it, that might want to have it for for some little performance thing, for any activity they have that could become as a videotape and of course be completely COVID risk free. And so I got the 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 letter from them. I also, I also have a letter from the Anderson County Torch Organization that I received recently. I think most of you are familiar with the Torch Organization. It's a, it's a certified four oh one three B kind of, or I think it's a B or C, I forget, but I checked with the law director and he said it's one of the things we can support using those funds. And they they do incredible things helping really absolutely homeless people only in Anderson County and finding them places to be out of the weather. And particularly in the wintertime, that's critical and they, I've already sent some of my own money to to them. I I I donated to them a number of times. But when I was informed by the law director that some of the money from this could also go to them, I got a notice back from them and I and I let Annette know, but it didn't do it in a positive way that she put it on the on the agenda. And in addition to that, I was talking with some people involved with the Sheriff's Department Cadet Program that does a lot for for not only helping support the people around the county with various services, but also just training these young men and women about what law enforcement is really like. And I I think that's a part of an education is really critical that we have that in our society, that our young people really admire the police and I understand what it is they really do. And so I'm also good, I uh, asking that people consider using some of their waste management fund for those three organizations. Now, to this evening, I I I'm, I am basically declaring that I intend with your approval, of course, because it still requires that, to donate three hundred dollars from my funds to Torch of Anderson County, three hundred and fifty dollars to the Sheriff's Department Cadet Program and then the rest of the money I have in my account to Oak, to the Oak Ridge High School uh, in accordance with their request that was in the on the agenda. So I'm hoping that other people will follow along. I think these are very worthy things, but those are the contributions I would like to make.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Does that need a, does that need a motion?
I I think it does. Quite often it's just put in the, just put in the uh, as a courtesy resolution or in the consent agenda. But it, but in this case, I wanted to add a couple of other items to make sure people were aware. So that's why I asked to have it put into the um, into the regular agenda. And I make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mead.
That can people consider donations to these three organizations?
Considered.
If they let Annette know, uh, then then she will, she will take care of how the funds are transferred.
Got a second by Commissioner Smallridge, any other discussion? Hey, let's vote.
I wish you.
Commissioner Scott.
I I don't recall us ever taking a full vote on someone taking funds out of their waste management account to be approved by full commission in such a manner.
Uh, yeah, I don't think we typically do since it's under consent, but I think since he.
I mean, he's making a motion for everybody to consider sending funds and I'm not going to vote on that.
Any other discussion? All right, let's vote.
I'm having a problem voting, but I I'll vote yes on that.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Smallridge votes yes. That motion has. One, no, two abstain. Okay, we'll move on. Any other new business? Commissioner Fred.
Just a little clarification, anytime anyone requests money out of their waste management funds, that's always been put under consent agenda and then when we approve the consent agenda, we vote on it there and that's where it's always been approved. So basically, regardless of uh, what you in as an individual takes out your funds, we all approve it regardless under the consent agenda when we approved the consent agenda. So that's where it's always been approved in the past for every single one of us.
Thank you. Commissioner Smallridge.
Yes, I, I was hoping, could we send someone, send out a process so we know how this is handled? I, I wasn't at all sure how we handle these funds or, so I, I think following up what Commissioner Fritz has just said, maybe if we could get a, uh, something that would spell out the process when we wish to support an organization.
Thanks. I think Annette can probably just help you out with that.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to old business, COVID-19 update.
If you want me to tackle about Mr. Chairman, I'm more than happy to.
Sure, if you have any, any information, that'd be great.
Oh, just real quickly, the latest, and I, I forwarded an email to you, uh, from the governor's office. On February 22nd, um, Tennessee will begin moving into the next phase, which is Phase 1B. So that is seniors age 65 plus and K through 12 teachers, and that includes, um, childcare facilities as well. And just a little quick update as of today, in Anderson County, 11,422 individuals have received the vaccine. Um, 10.4% of our population here in Anderson County has received first dose and 4.4, I think, I can't read my own handwriting, so 4.42 or 7 has received a second dose. And just to kind of give a little comparison, if you look at our positive cases that have recovered, um, that number currently is at 7,387. So you can see there, um, we're moving in the right direction for administration of vaccines. And I, again, I always encourage folks to go to the Tennessee website, the COVID-19 website for the state of Tennessee. They continue to post updates, all kinds of information. They have tools for eligibility, um, you know, other things that are there. They, for instance, if you want to type in where you can get a vaccine, they, you can put your zip code in and it'll show you the pharmacies in your community. So here, so far, Muncie's has signed up and then I think Max and Powell has signed up as a delivery point. And then there's other information. For instance, I, I deal a lot with the state, but there are federal programs and federal distribution partners as well. So a lot of times you'll see, it's very hard to kind of decipher all of that, but if you go to that website, you can get the, the who and the where, even if it's a federal distribution coming directly from federal government to CBS or, uh, to Walgreens. Um, I would encourage you to drive folks to that website because it's, it's the helpful place to get information.
Thank you. We've got a question from Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I've been keeping track of, of our numbers, um, and we're kind of staying around when it comes to an active number. We're staying around that 200, 210, 225 mark. But one of the things that I'm kind of astonished by is the fact that, as an example, today we have 210 active cases, of which 169 are hospitalized. I find it hard to believe that there's only, only 41 people in Anderson County that have COVID right now. And I, and I, and I, the reason why I say that is because I, I'm aware of how the health department is, um, putting the, the shots or the vaccines, that's, that's their priority and, and that's great. But there's so many people that cannot afford $130 for a rapid test and they're simply waiting to see their doctor or their only, you know, they're doing what they can, um, to try and get rid of their cold or flu or whatever they feel they may have, um, instead of saying that it's COVID. And, um, I, I mean, is it not possible, Mayor, that, that the county health department can do more testing?
Well, I think, well, they, they have available the self-test. Um, they are looking for, as the supply vaccine increases, they are actively looking at alternative sites and, and when I'm on the TEMA calls, uh, the state of Tennessee wants to, to stand up other sites and they're, you know, using other partners as well. You're going to see that continuously. It's going to start to unfold where the health departments can get back to doing the patient care and the testing. But right now, like for instance, if you go to the Anderson County Health Department or Rome County, you're going to see there's just, you know, you've got patients that are coming there, you've got the dental clinic patients and there just isn't all the space on site. But they still do offer that self-test. And then on the hospitalization, one thing that is kind of confusing, um, when it says there is that number hospitalized, that is going back to when they first started tracking in March. So that is not the current number of people that are hospitalized per COVID. So the, the hospitalizations in the state of Tennessee have dropped dramatically, which is an absolute blessing. Um, but that, that's from the beginning. So the number of people that tested positive since March in Anderson County, of that number that has tested positive, that's the number in total since the beginning that have been hospitalized. And you have to go into the raw data. They do put it on their website and I confess, I don't always get to check that every day, but it will do a daily track. So you can go pull that raw data, but you have to use your Excel spreadsheet, go down, carry over and you'll see, you know, no new hospitalizations or plus one hospitalization. And you can, you kind of have to track it in real time.
Right.
I, I hope that helps a little bit there as well.
Yeah, it does get rather confusing. It really does. Um, and I know that, that they're only keeping a window of time when they're tracking the active cases. They're only watching those for like 10 days. Anything after that falls off of their count, um, as being an active case.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
I mean, because I've, I know people who have had it for two and three weeks at a time. I mean, it's pretty sad that, that stuff just doesn't go away. Um, cool. All right, well, I appreciate that. Oh, and I, I'm sorry, I had one more question for you. Of the 11,422 that have been vaccinated, how many of those people are from Anderson County?
Well, my understanding of tho, that, those numbers that are reported, those are, um, you know, I'll need to, I'll need to confirm that before I speak out of turn, Commissioner. I know that all of the counties are letting, so the state did not want to do, you have to be in Anderson County.
Right.
You know, there, we're all sharing. So for instance, um, I know many people in Anderson County who have been, had, you know, a vaccine in Campbell County and some in Knox County. And then likewise, we've seen some come here. So I think that has just been when they were working through that regional, that regional hotline and they're encouraging people to stay within their own county. But let me confirm that. Uh, my understanding is that number represents our residents because if you break it down, they're saying the percentage of the people here. But I will verify and confirm that for you because I don't want to put out misinformation.
How are they keeping track, Mayor, of, of folks that have requested to get the vaccine? Is that an automated system that's keeping up who's requested and where they fall in line?
Well, there's a new scheduling tool that has been on-boarded that they've been working on for the last couple of weeks. And apparently, my understanding from our team of calls is that you don't have to re-register. All of that information's been transferred over and pre-pop, pre-populated into the new platform. The older platform was very, you could register and, but then it became a manual issue. So you would oftentimes see what appeared to be larger waiting list because, um, your health department, for instance, would be more interested and, and place the priority on actually administering the vaccine. Then they had 72 hours to go in and, um, uh, report. And then also they had to go in and manually remove people from the lists. Um, I, I could definitely reach out to Charles and get more of, um, an update for you on how they are managing that. I know, um, you know, I know they're burning the candle at both ends and in the middle and, um, because they're all things. And as, as this new platform gets in place, as they start getting more and more, um, facilities out in the community in these new phases, um, you know, we're going to get through it quicker and it won't be so work intensive, um, as they develop these new platforms and new procedures and new ways of doing things.
Right. All right, well, cool. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion on the COVID update? Okay, thank you, Mayor Frank. And next we'll have the IDB, uh, summary by Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll try to do this very quickly because it was a relatively short meeting. Um, February 9th, the last Tuesday at 4:30, the Anderson County Industrial Development Board met in the conference room at the Anderson County Chamber Headquarters. This was the first of their quarterly meetings for the year and the primary item on the agenda for the meeting was to discuss, um, a tax abatement for personal and equipment requested by the 3M Corporation located here in Anderson County. Um, I know for a fact that, um, our, uh, property assessor, Johnny Alley, had been having a good amount of problems in trying to communicate with 3M regarding some discrepancies in numbers that he had from them as opposed to the numbers that 3M had given to the, um, the chamber for the, uh, requested tax abatement. Um, one of the good things that came out of this meeting is that, uh, property assessor Alley was able to speak directly to the person from 3M that was on virtually and they were able to resolve the issue because 3M had originally contracted with some third-party entity, um, as a buffer between them and the property assessor. So the 3M representative did away with that, allowing, um, Johnny Alley to talk directly and I think probably will very soon have, uh, resolution to the discrepancies in the numbers. Um, the other issue was that, um, Attorney Cry had developed, um, new agreements between Anderson County, um, IDB and 3M and, um, the, uh, personal and equipment, um, agreements. Um, unfortunately, 3M did not have anyone on virtually. So consequently, there was not the ability to have the discussion that was required. So on, um, motion, the, issues were tabled. Uh, they are waiting to hear back from 3M when they can have the required and proper people available, uh, for the meeting. And hopefully that'll take place in about a month's time when, uh, the IDB will then call a special, uh, call meeting to discuss this. And, um, at that time, I plan on attending and we'll report back what happens, uh, on this tax abatement issue. But, um, that's pretty much the report that I have at this time. And if anyone has any questions, I'll do the best I can and my voice will allow me to answer.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Fritz.
Yes, on just a different thing. And what I wanted to talk about is a problem I don't know if all saw it. Ken Liner with Clinton Currier gave recognition our county in this commission for being a beacon on the COVID relief funds request. I just want to read an excerpt. I think he did a great job on it. And he said, "As far as anyone can tell, this may be the first time a county has requested a state or federal government to look at the finer print. The finer print being rural communities that take up so much of our great country's landscape. Maybe there is an operations committee in Kansas or Wyoming or some other county and some other state that you can see in your mind's eyes being rural, contemplating the same sort of resolution for their communities. Who knows? But I wouldn't expect anything less from a county that ushered atomic age and ended War II. It's the site of TBA's first hydroelectric dam to usher in the age of electricity for all in the 1930s and home to the first to segregated Southern high schools twice, one by federal mandate, one by decree of a publicly elected school board. On the latter of these three, doesn't matter how it happened. It's important that it did happen and those instances, Anderson County was the beacon. And Anderson County is that beacon again. Anderson County is home to a county government that sees the importance of supporting a rural infrastructure as vital to its citizens' needs. States and feds may control the COVID-19 relief funds and the red tape it takes to get them, but maybe Anderson County government can take a stand and make some people rethink things and understand what's needed and where. Thank you."
Any other old business? Now, Commissioner Scott?
Sorry, just briefly, um, to everyone on commission, the county government days in March have been canceled. There's no, uh, conference in March in Nashville.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Nothing else coming before the board? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.